Secret process come up with what Steve's talking about is articulation of the upper bushes lower and you love it, great. If you don't, you'd rather go back to this, great. You want to see these instead of blue tanned and white, all horizontal, ward and back, we're open to changing that. You know, as Steve mentioned, one of the struggles is what is the architecture we're trying to land in without Shuen Drive? You have a plaza, you have a couple brick buildings, you have ground buildings, you have the backside of the buildings that are on the Stocky District which are covered some of those best deciding. What are we trying to do other than make something more proud and high in architecture?
I would ask Dennis if you can speak to some of the stormwater and how that's going to be handled?
Yeah, thank you. We submitted a report called preliminary report for water, sorry, we did a water supply sewer disposal and the stormwater report. We looked at the current site, both the characteristics of the current stormwater runoff from the body and water quality going into, and then we did an assessment of post-development stormwater runoff. All the site currently drained spoke Fair Street, that block of Fair Street, I should say. Herzog's property, which included the Pantryill and warehouse and of course, City Park and Garage, property all drained into Shuen Drive drainage system and our pipe to the South Street, at a low point of Shuen Drive, down here, down, savings by the red doors. The plan in the report bills indicates two things. We can reduce the rate of runoff marginally from the site by putting pourers papers, treating it in the pedestrian plaza with a filter. So we're collecting that, we're slowing the rate of runoff in that area that currently to C C Street, and it's going to be flat back, we have the way now. Collect that through a pourer system and filter system, and we're also going to take all runoff from the buildings and the site, as you know, ninety percent of the site, the building, and pedestrian plaza. And we're going to plot and treat it, first flush, stormwater treatment both on the east and west part of the plaza. So, and that's in our study. So we're going to improve this stormwater quality, according on the site significantly in accordance with the redevelopment standards, it's been the A B C Design Manual 2015, we're required of this, this, we happen to meet thresholds for redevelopment, which means addressing stormwater quality and not increasing rate of runoff from the site. So we're reducing rate of runoff from the site and we're adding water quality treatments. When we get into SWIP, which is a design document that goes with the building permits, so to speak, we're going to also capture, once the building is designed more detailed, some other water body benefits from that plaza, from that deck where there's a lot of rain, we're going to take that for rain gardens, those kind of things, and we can also further reduce, further improve water quality by, so you can further reduce the rate of runoff from the site. That report was submitted only to the D U A A C, but also I distributed directly to the city engineer, and it could detail the quantified grass for the pre-post-development condition, the current condition, post-development condition under various stormwater events, and how we're going to address the water quality, the volume, treatment of the stormwater and stuff.
Is that an updated report from what you've already submitted, or?
It's all of it, July.
Current one, okay.
It's all the same, very, it's a stick report that is on your city website and was submitted iconically. I haven't received any detailed comments yet from the city engineer, but I expect he will when I'm on. And I can pause the words to the then.
You said there was going to be some rooftop terraces also, is that what you're saying?
I was talking in the rain gardens on the event deck, which is full level over the garage. I did not take credit for that again in the report, but I think there's some opportunity to do some water quality features there as well, that deck, there's a lot of landscape and most of that.
There's the tool catch and order.
On the Shuen side, I might not work.
Yes, on the Shuen side, there's an opportunity here to do some green roof. It all depends on the ultimate design of the building approval. There's a balancing act between designing every detail out, and I think what Dennis is providing is that in the worst case scenario, given that report and taking no credit for any green roof technologies, we see the water fall to the stand in New York State. Once we get to do the final building design, we're going to proceed further.
So we're reducing, actually the project slightly reduces the, as you know, sites ninety-nine percent impermeable at present time, pavement, and there's a little bit of grass, but it's taken apart in a lot of buildings. So we are creating the go-kart, we are creating impermeable, or some permeable surfaces within the pedestrian plaza, and we're also creating some landscape areas that don't currently exist. So we are able to reduce the peak flow rates, total line runoff off the site, peak flow rates off the site, and also the rest of water quality in accordance with standards and that, so I think that's great in the report, but I think we'll wait for the city engineers to reveal asylum as well.
And I will note for the record that the report was submitted to Judy Gasson, and she did sign off that C has the capacity.
Yeah, there's a separate for water supply and wastewater that was submitted as well for the process. I did pretty much get a good positive, except for both the city engineer and the water superintendent respect capacity and general approach.
Getting back to visuals, I know you're taking different vantage points throughout the stockade area, in the surrounding areas. What vantage point did you use, like the furthest distance you traveled to show how this project would appear?
I think the furthest vantage point we have in this presentation currently is the one down to Wall Street. Let me go back up and take a look here. I think it's this one. I know in our visual test study, you should be able to pull up. Can we get one of the skytops?
Yeah.
It's actually an aerial shot, just individually next to it. Okay, let me see if I can find that. And one further down Wall Street, and I think Fair Street as well. Here we go, we will find it. Okay, so that is the same one we just looked at. This is further down, oh no, this is looking the other way, I'm sorry. Looking down North Front Street. This is further down Wall Street, that's the one that I think we were just referring to. And then we have a, yeah, this is Fair Street. This is a close one. I'm trying to find the aerial from, it's at the, it's at the end, okay. Just got it, that's the areas.
That's from Skytop. Yeah, that's from Skytop, that's from, for us.
Now, how's it different?
Can you see it? That's without the building. That's what they're doing.
That's Benedictine Oswald for.
Oh, here we go.
Is that the visual on Wall Street, which is right now?
Visual on Wall Street, which is right now.
Sure.
What are we looking at on the third floor? Get that there, sorry.
It's a gray.
So the gray are apartments. The idea was to step them back and keep them to the side so that, you know, Steve John Baker, so that this corner is tied into this building and created that wall that the Starland preservation commission wanted on Wall Street, without interfering with the existing corners that's there. So the gray is just like what's below it, or apartments, and by stepping it back, it lessens the scale. Am I describing it well?
Yeah, that's pretty good. And then to show the next one along North Front Street, you see why the building steps up to four stories and drains the.
The next one's.
Fair Street Plaza. So the idea is to have the same scale on both sides of the plaza as the King's Runway.
I think that's what I was, that's back here. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where the building steps up from three stories forward. So we have the, again, a good balance at that corner where it lines the entry to the plaza. So part of that above is the backside of the apartments that front Fair Street. So we cut away all the units that were on the top of North Front Street, so we can have more sense of the scale of the corners, et cetera. So.
And they kind of line up with the peaks on the, on the old King's Building there too.
Yeah, they do, with the ridge line. There's actually a floor space up there, so we have a couple hotel rooms where we can fit them in.
So the existing brick building that is the Herzog Warehouse, the new building will be nearly exactly the same size, and so will the building across the street. It's a three-story building, but because of the pitch roof, it creates a height on a four-story building. And over here, we have a four-story building with a flat roof instead. So very sensitive to the height and what scale fits. One of the projects that preceded ours was much, much taller and needed to be much taller because it was only working on with one side of the property. We didn't contemplate using the Herzog Warehouse side in order to get the density needed. So by incorporating both sides of the street, we get the pedestrian plaza, and we get the density needed for the parking at a much lower scale and a much more reasonable scale to what exists in our town.
It's also similar to the site set as far as trying to scale the corner building. I think it's actually a story lower, if you check the height on this site set, I believe. Now, the whole four stories. Well, there's a little penthouse, right?
The pedestrian plaza, the out of store, is that how you transitioned from one side to the other?
That's right. That's the idea. So there's.
What's the trellis there? What's behind that, those windows?
Yeah, those are the elevator floors. So there's an elevator tower there, and these trellises may become covered greater to further separate the historic district from the nonhistoric district. There's a thought of actually putting a demarcation on the paper pattern of the pedestrian plaza to show that the left Stocky District, or you're entering the Stocky District, depending which way you're going, as paying homage to the history of very defined walls in the city that used to exist. So these are great, these are ideas, nothing says stone yet.
Anything found within endangered species that?
No, there was a report submitted by Mike Winkie. From Sucker, that did a threatened neighbor species that had habitat ability assessment report, and I found no significant issues. Because the site is about, approximately twenty-five acre fully developed urban property presently, there's not a lot of wildlife, natural, immediately in the property. There's few street trees going down Fair Street in this, so I did, maybe more trees in the project. We don't have danger species or flora or habitat issues on this particular property.
So, there's another question. I think this is your grid location.
The Land Works Preservation Commission has put their review has done a comment asking where the exact boundaries are of the Stocky historic district. So that is being researched right now, okay, between Shibo and other current municipal efforts. We are in the process of that.
Excuse me if I could have a comment. Sue along those lines, I didn't mention this earlier, but I think it was Hayes, Clemmon, over at Vides, was one of the factors of three different aesthetics early for the project. Part of that, again, along more fronts to identify the store edge, and then the last is, as Joe said, the transition, those are also the entries for the housing, but it's intentionally different, so you can define the edge of the Stocky District, if you will, and then move to something differently on. So that's very much the thought process behind why that's the way it is.
Can you speak to the trees, the rule of mature trees as this project moves forward? What are we looking at as far as that goes? Is there a significant amount of vegetation that has to be removed, or?
Yeah, it sounds good, I feel like I'm.
You're saying, I have a, there's one comment from somebody from the public, they're saying that there may be a dozen healthy mature trees along the Fair Street extension. These trees will not be, they're going to have to be removed, right? You said?
Yes.
Okay, if it is actually removed, we can count them by going to the board. I don't know if there's a dozen. There's a few along Fair Street extension, and there's probably two along North Front Street. I couldn't get off on that count, I'm doing it from memory, it was a bit longer than I had.
There's a number of street trees, six, eight, ten, twelve, or twelve, Fair, Shuen, but they're, we replace the more trees of vegetation that currently exist on the site by a significant amount.
Okay.
We're not creating a green space park, but we are adding more landscaping that currently exists in that context of the site, which is Fair Street extension and the Herzog parcels.
You can just look right near.
Yeah, right there, there's probably forty or fifty trees that are replacing eight to twelve street trees.
And on the other side of the building as well. So if you, I don't have a rendered image of it, but if you were to look at the floor plan right here, I think it shows up Fair Street, you joke, before you went to the parking, there's trees on both sides.
Okay.
Of the lower part of Fair Street, that one end.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You rolled the key down here, right, I just had to find the page it's on. It's lower. Dennis is correct, there's going to be significantly more trees, which was what we were talking about a second ago. And here you go. Oh, this is showing some going up, both sides of Fair Street extension, and then there's the map. Okay, there you can see.
Those are the trees right there that are lying on Fair Street, on the one side of the street going up to North Front. And there's.
Okay, over here.
So the plan is to remove those and.
They do have to come down, but again, they're going to be replaced probably by a factor of five, ten times more trees after the project's over. And if the project's not nicely landscaped enough for, for the owners, for the, it's not going to have the appeal. Well, it's very scarcity, the landscape at present, just use, you know, a number of street trees go to Fair Street is pretty much in the one side of Fair Street. We'll be able to show you, we'll be able to cycle later in the phase, we'll see if we'll show you a lot more detail of the landscape.
Right, the last, once we, if we're successful in moving to Seager, the next phase is to develop a more detailed site plan, which would have landscaping plan, have a count location of exactly the number of trees that go on the site.
And the lighting details, which I know will come, come out maybe on all lighting on the L E D here, but.
And dark sky.
Dark sky, dark sky society guidelines. All that will be layered in as the site plan process advances.
But that has to do with migrating birds, is that what the dark sky society, is that not part of their?
No.
Okay. I know that there's.
Maybe a little bit, but basically energy conservation and reducing urban layer, like pollution.
Has any thought been given to impact on other community services, like emergency services, school district, those kinds of things?
Yeah, the school district, I can tell you from the target market that we are playing for, and from our experience of building similar to this, we have no school leech children at all in the building. So in terms of impacted school district, we do plan to offer internship, and we do plan to offer scholarship as part of being good neighbors, but in terms of impacting their budget, as they have now, we don't anticipate there would be. Unfortunately, the moment is not going in the right direction anyway, but we don't see this in can to be a problem. As far as other services go, it's a regular building, so I don't anticipate we're going to have a lot of uses of fire falls in the building operating, which is similar in size to this. In McKipsy, we have a few a year. Some of these are piled up too long and there's smoke. We plan to use all electric appliances, not gas, or a couple of these, which is an energy need as well as the environment, but another very quick crack to go in and burn the building down. So we're designing the building in a way to minimize those type of calls. Now, security issues, we are planning as part of our projects to have a full-time security person monitor the building to make sure that people are feeling safe, not like that we're to the police force. However, things happen, just like any building, and I'm sure things happen now in parking lots that exist. So I can't say we're having no calls, but I don't see this being a problem to any community services.
Do you feel like closing Fair Street is going to have more services?
I, I think Dennis should speak to that better than I can. He knows the traffic study better than I do. Is that fair?
Yeah, traffic impact study that's submitted in July was prepared by Craig Manning, one of the premier traffic planning firms in the state. And this more is, if you look at several things, ten intersections in the neighborhood, health and function currently, health and function in 2025. Project wasn't built, but just increased the backup traffic, which is based on past studies, has increased about two percent a year. And then they layer in the project, the increased traffic in the project as far as visits. They also categorized mice and traffic in these intersections, and the project includes the closing of Fair Street, that one block is the through street, although it'll still be the entrance in and out of Park and Garage, which currently serves as an entrance to the parking lot and Herzog Warehouse site and former Counter-Railway in this. So they looked at all that, they looked at the level of service, they looked at what peaks were occurring at these intersections, which is really what they came up with most, so to speak. They looked at, they evaluated the level of service at each of those ten intersections. For every movement in the intersection, left turn, right turn, through, from the half garage, it's a very detailed report. I know it was submitted, and maybe that you're going to choose to have another traffic generation, so we'll get it, but the impacts that they projected for the closing of Fair Street were very minimal as far as on the other intersections in the city. And the impacts of the, they identified a couple existing problems, developed counter-traffic as well, and what can be done to solve them. They did indicate that the intersection is Shuen against the plaza, First Street, which is signalized now, but it's not, the signals do not function or are longer. What happened, they reprogrammed and brought it as a normal signal with a pedestrian crossroad signal as well. They recommended some things, someone put it down, the only ones were plain, put it down, and with John Street, which are two problem intersections as far as level of service at peak P M hours, which they generally found to be from five, from four thirty P M to five thirty P M on weekdays, was one of the peak traffic or heading these intersections. They took counts around the clock, and they narrowed it down to the hours that were, were the solid highest traffic generation of those intersections, that's headed to be four thirty to five thirty P M on weekdays, weekends sort of different. The report, the conclusions to the report are found in pages thirty-two or thirty-three, but they did not show significant impact on the project, both on the product of traffic, which they estimated to be under eighty-three trips, total trips in that peak hour, on the parking garage and the resident and the businesses. It's a good study, I have that version in the full version, but it's very detailed, and they basically evaluated it to extend to the asset at ten intersections. I will say this also, the city has an initiative in the arena to do some work on that avenue. I believe the first intersection is going to be redesigned, signal and pedestrian safety motive was put down in a hall down intersection. Problems with that intersection spilled down, put down, marked out towards North Front Street, and hit it. Main Street, you can take a left without stop, so that level of service is pretty good, but as you get down to Westbrook and John Street, unless you know, it jams up, and it jams up, and all down, so the recommendations for the city as part of the D R I, partnering with cities involved with, or some things that are going to be done in those intersections, to improve traffic, but this project's not hitting, hitting those intersections in a significant way. Or is that closing with a half a block of Fair Street hitting that in a significant way?
I'll just tie on to that, there is also those old four on Shuen Drive to do a design and engineering study, and the traffic impact analysis report has been submitted to the city engineer and to our superintendent of public works, both of whom have recommended that we ask for a third consultant and outside consultant. They don't feel that they are qualified to review it for us. So we're working on that right now.
Level of service, just so you know, for signalized and unsignalized intersections are rated A through F. Based on the amount of time you have to wait to enter that intersection and make your move, at a rate of where every movement at that intersection. So all of that is in the report. Existing additions proposed if the project's not built, and proposed if the project's built, as designed, the additional traffic generation closed in the first.
I do have tremendous respect for Craig Manning Engineering, but I also respect the convenience of other departments.
This is highly specialized field. My field is environmental engineering, it's water, wastewater, stormwater. I'm not involved in traffic study, but it's a side, it's a specialty. And I understand why the city engineer would like to outside view.
I tend to agree with that, too. Getting a third set of eyes on it, I think is a good thing.
good thing. All right, what else do we have?
So, the other city committees, not many specifics, but where do you leave off of visual impacts and design? Is this something I know from past projects, applicants get bounced back and forth? Is this something that we should have a joint meeting so that we can all get in a room and you're getting the feedback from everybody at one time instead of bouncing back and forth month after month or what?
Well, what we hope is that we now have the feedback because we presented this to everyone, and we did get it at separate times, but I think we've gotten a lot of feedback. And I'd love to get ready to feedback from your group. What we like to do is based on all that feedback, present our final version of options. And then based on that, I say quote unquote final, based on those, make a decision as to what is the approval drawing. And so, that would then go back to each board, but it's from a procedural point of view, or the lawyers group can correct me. We need to finish Seeker or any other board can pass any approval. So, getting your input has been great. One of the problems with the city's current process is that you would only through planning approval, through Seeker, through site plan approval, design the whole building, and then go over to historic landmark preservation commission for getting the building permit. So, we've done a number of meetings with them in advance so that we have the input to put into this design, afford to progress it tomorrow on the line. It can't give us a vote until this board approves Seeker.
And Joe just brought up a very good point that our focus right now is on Seeker. Once we get through the Seeker process, then we can move on to the detailed site development plan review process.
And I would note, right?
Mike?
I would note among the, Joe was correct about the sequencing. We're in a coordinated review process, so this board ultimately makes the seeker determination, whether it's a POSDAC or an AGGAC. And in making that decision, they will consider all of the information that's been given to them from the HOPC, from landmarks, from whoever else has commented. That's part of the process. And we also emphasize that visuals do not necessarily stop after Seeker. The case law in our state is that visual impacts are also site plan issues, so they will certainly be considered during site plan too.
All right, in other words, you're not getting one bite of the apple on the visuals. We're trying to get scale, size, scope, and overall look and feel, although we have very detailed design. But once you pass Seeker, your final approval on the visuals would be the site plan approval that's not Seeker.
Well, I have to say that since we first started reading about this, since you made the initial pitch at the LGVQ presentation, a lot of work has been put forth in this, a lot of back and forth. I think we've whittled down and boiled down a lot of the, a lot of the key points that are important, that we think are important. And I think with just a few more, for instance, the traffic study and maybe another little, something to do with visual, I think we're down to a few key points now that we're concerned about. So, if, does the rest of the world feel the same way that I do, or am I not speaking for everybody?
No, I think that's, I mean, the ability is only in terms of visual.
Bring that in a little closer.
The visual has been a concern for most of the speakers, so I'm glad they are addressing that. So, that would be, we should, the traffic study, you know, should be good.
So, if we can make arrangements to talk about and to get the traffic study to a third set of eyes so we can have a better understanding of how that, I'm not a traffic expert, but I got to leave it up to the experts, so it'll give me a better idea of where we are at that.
I already have one possible individual that I'm going to reach out to.
Okay. And Dennis, having, you know, you haven't already talked to John Salties and Norman about this, I mean, they're on board with it too, but having a, have another set of eyes on this as well.
Right, and water, sewer, stormwater, just to reiterate, the reports that were submitted are believe demonstrate that it does significant impact, but all along the way with site plan and administrative improvements with public works and the city engineers are going to have a sign off on this with document for the stormwater permitting commission by the state. There'll be several lights in the apple all the way down. The process, as it has provided this design in many gritty details, they will have approvals and requests to issue, and they're going to have to be happy. Besides, besides the test of the significant factor, they're going to have to be happy with the detailed design and all the background, technical data.
And as this project developed from the original meeting, you've had to tweak your stormwater thing based on the configuration of the site plan too. I mean, this is something that is ongoing. So, I mean, the traffic study is something that's weighing on me, that needs another look at, so. As far as the other items on our, the studies that were required, where are we with, has all those issues been addressed? The other issues been addressed? I mean, have the questions been answered?
Site and traffic and visual.
That I'm asking the rest of the board too, if they have been answered. If not, you know, speak up and we'll... If you're uncomfortable, if there's something else that needs to be addressed, I'm certainly to talk about it.
We are reacting to site and scale. And we discuss changes in promises regarding site and scale, we satisfy...
It's part of the visual, which I believe we still want to take more look at.
Okay, I mean, that's it, traffic and visual is...
Yes, we are discussing the past schedule, we joined in with the HOPC, so the discussion and impressions are in the board. We're going to suggest they do over five years, then talk about that in the future days, so we can settle that.
Correct. And the HAC, the HLPC, and the planning board, and we're still waiting for a comment back from DOJ and Chabot.
All right, so you're looking into a, you have a view of the traffic study, we should be coordinating...
Correct.
...as regards to those two issues.
Yes.
Keeping in mind that's new, this one, we want to start a discussion, address this in October.
Can we, will you use the mic please, so we can hear? Should we use the mic?
We're talking about scheduling a joint meeting with planning board, Heritage Area Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission, so that we're all at the same table discussing the same things, what our concerns are, and so we add to that.
And we're waiting for comment from the county planning board, mayor Steve Dooty, and Chabot.
Do you have any timeline on those trees?
Right now, I don't have one, but we can reach out to them tomorrow. Again, stress the importance of getting back.
But if we can follow, I mean, I'm sure you're going to try to do this as best as you can, follow the pattern where we're going to have special meetings just for this project and not have our regular meetings.
I mean, I believe because of scale and scope of this project, it deserves a special meeting versus trying to pull it into another meeting. Particularly if we combine and we have multiple boards.
Are you okay with that? That sounds good?
I agree with that.
Okay. Then again, the project has certainly evolved from when we first started meeting together. I appreciate, and the board appreciates everything that you've done to address our concerns and the concerns from the public. So, obviously, we also have the other questions. Anybody from the applicant side?
Mr. Chairman, so I have a question on the Seeker process. Part two of this long form has to be filled out at some point. Does the board want us, the board to do it differently? Some boards will say submit a draft of what you think those answers should be. Some boards say, don't submit a draft or do our own draft, but no, perhaps submit it. There's not a correct protocol. It's up to the board to have what we like to do.
I would say that Mike and I have worked on multiple projects together, and if they want to submit a draft for review and consideration, then this board can certainly review it, take a full look at it, and one with our corporation council, and we would go from there.
I should have said too, that the part two is not determinative factor, it's checking boxes. It's a box checking form.
That's correct.
It has nothing to do with granting the determination of significance in terms of making a final decision. It's a box checking form.
Well, I would just request that before anything gets submitted by the applicant for part two, that we have a joint meeting with the HLPC and the...
Yes.
And we make that...
Good point.
...for that. I appreciate your opinion.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, so, planning will coordinate with all of the folks that we just identified, and hopefully we'll get something set up for the traffic study, get that hammered out too, and we'll, all right, the comments back, yes, and we will work to set up a special meeting in between our regular meetings. Sound good? Okay. So, with that, I think we're ready for the chairman now, or it's in line in order, isn't it? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to a chairman by second, second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry.